And I'm gonna try to remember to advance both the slideshow here and can you see in that camera if I'm in frame?
Um, you have most of it ahead. You want me to adjust it? You want the TV or not?
Does it need to go up?
Yeah, just slightly. It's pretty tight.
Do that. That should be fine.
Yeah, that should be better.
Okay. So I'll try to advance both of these. So today's topic is um HR management essentially. It's the Management, Legislation, and Regulations section. So in your books, uh at the front you, there's a outline of all the topics that they try to cover in the book. And a couple different places, there are sections on um on legislation. We've already covered in a previous in a previous session, I hope you remember, we already covered some of the legislation that affects telecommunications. So there was the the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, the enhanced nine oh one act of two thousand four, uh the Net nine oh one act and several others. Well, today, we're going to be focusing on legislation that affects human resources management. The reason is that a lot of people who get their ENPs get it because they want to go on into PSAP management or something along those lines. And HR unfortunately is a huge part of what you do if you're in PSAP management. You spend a good portion of your day dealing with human resources type issues. We have, our next session will be on um Public Relations and Education, which will be taught by Jennifer Kirkland from Vale Public Police Department. And just recently of Denver nine oh one is Carl Simpson. He'll be teaching the one after that in December on um the selection process. So we're not gonna get a whole lot into selection today. We're gonna touch on selection a little bit insofar as the law uh covers uh anti-discrimination or anti-discriminatory practices. Uh but for the most part, what we're gonna be talking about today is not nine oh one specific. But then I'm gonna try, as I, as we go through these, I'm gonna try to give some, some examples that might be uh applicable to dispatch centers so that it at least has some relevance to you. Now, I don't know if you've taken a look at, but starting on page one forty-seven of the book, it's at the very end, is a list of US legislation to review. And they actually put in parentheses with an asterisk, "Good one to study."
That's important.
There's a huge list there. Some of those include the ones that we, that we've already covered like the um I'm looking to see if they are in this list actually. Doesn't look like they are. Uh but following those pages is a list of the, is, is all of those pieces of legislation and executive orders in more detail. And it goes on and on and on. Uh and then after, let's see, starting on page one sixty-one, the very bottom of one sixty-one is where it gets into the nine oh one specific stuff. So everything from here to here is all HR related. Now, I have a master in public administration. I took classes in HR uh law and there are pieces of legislation in there that I had never heard of before. So the, there's a good chance that a lot of this is not that important to your day-to-day job. But because it's in the book, there's a chance that it'll be on the test. I'm going to take, for today, to, to keep this to a reasonable amount of time, I kinda made some judgment calls on what to spend the most time on based on what I thought was most likely to be on the test. There is stuff that I think uh is probably a lot more likely than others, so that's what we're gonna spend the majority of the time on, but we will touch on the other things as well. Uh so what we're gonna cover, we're gonna start with, gonna start with the stuff that we can kinda gloss over a little bit, and that's labor relations unionization law. Um that is the least applicable to you because Colorado does not have a single PSAP in it that is unionized. There are parts of the country though where PSAP personnel are unionized. They have unions that the dispatchers belong to. Sometimes they have dif- they have different dispatch, they had different unions for the police dispatchers and for the fire dispatchers. Um and if you don't think that might make things complicated, you're absolutely right. So we will talk a little bit about that. Yes, sir?
I don't remember which, but I thought there was one PSAP that I talked to that their employees fell under their police union.
In Colorado?
And they're actually recognized by their, they're part of their police union.
Okay, well, that's news to me. Do you remember which one?
I don't know.
Okay. That, that doesn't, I mean, it wouldn't surprise me. Uh
We attempted it for, and with greatly, yeah.
I just wasn't aware of them. The first dispatch center I worked at, we were technically part of the uh Telecommunications Workers of America uh union, but I think only like three of us in the entire department actually paid dues and went to the meetings. Uh it was an open and we'll talk a little bit about that. Open shop versus closed shop. Open shop, you don't have to be a union member to work there. Um and if you don't have to pay the dues, then why do it? You know, and that's one of the reasons why unions prefer closed shops, 'cause then everybody pays in. Um but there's um let's see, the second, the second dispatch center I worked at, I wasn't a member because I was a supervisor and supervisors weren't members, but all of the dispatchers were. And that was actually a fairly strong union there. I think pretty much everybody was a member. And uh they had rules with the county such as if we took somebody in for a verbal reprimand, we had to have the union rep there. Just to observe. So it was a totally different world than what I was used to before. And then I moved to New Mexico and became a PSAP manager and it was un-unionized. And my, my, uh occasionally somebody would bring up the idea of, of unionization and my philosophy was, okay, I'll try to treat my employees good enough that they don't wanna that they don't feel a need to join a union. So that was, that was kind of uh my approach there. Uh so we're gonna talk a little bit about labor, uh labor relations, unionization laws. Uh we'll tend, spend a lot more time on employment standards laws because those will affect your day-to-day uh even if you're not in management, they affect you because you fall under those, you have, you're protected by those laws. We're gonna spend a s- a special amount of time, we'll spend a, a, a separate slide on the Fair Labor Standards Act. Uh because that's one that you deal with every day. If you work in America, in any job, you deal with the Fair Labor Standards Act. If you're in management, um and especially in a twenty-four seven, three sixty-five environment, it's really easy to run afoul of that law if you're not careful. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And PSAPs do occasionally uh accidentally violate the Fair Labor Standards Act. So we'll talk about ways to avoid doing that. Anti-discrimination laws, there's a whole slew of them, more than you probably ever knew existed. Uh but the two that we'll talk about the most because they're the most um, the most impactful on day-to-day operations is the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four and Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety, which I know you're familiar with, but you may not uh you may not have all the details. When it first came out, in fact, there was a lot of hysteria over, okay, we're gonna have to completely tear down our building and rebuild it to accommodate any potential, any, e- even conceivable uh disability that, that might uh 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 be involved in an applicant who come, who wants to come and work here. And that's not exactly the case. So we'll talk about what's actually required of employers under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And finally, we'll talk about laws concerning employee benefits. Um and there are a number of those as well, but the one we'll talk about the most because it is the most complicated is the Family Medical Leave Act. And there was a lot of a lot of uh confusion over that when it first got uh passed into law as well.
It's funny, I always thought it was federal, not family.
Yep, family. It could be federal though.
We could send federal on the medical leave.
Yeah. Um, so labor relations law, and this is the only, this is the only uh slide I have on this. So because of the fact that I don't, I, I find the chances of it being on the test less than the rest, but I can't guarantee it. So uh for each of these, I have the number that corresponds to in the Body of Knowledge book. And that number refers to the number after page, it starts on page one forty-eight. All of these are listed with details in no particular order. I'm not sure why they did that. It's not in chronological order, it's not by order of topic. They're in no particular order. So to help you through it, these are in chronological order, in the order that they were passed. And over here, you have the number that they correspond to in, in the Body of Knowledge, starting on page one forty-eight. And so I'm gonna send, I'll uh post this uh this weekend. I'm gonna catch up on all the video posting this weekend and all the uh presentation posting this weekend. So as of Monday, you'll be able to go in and download this presentation uh from the website and it'll have the list of all the uh, the numbers that they correspond to. Um unfortunately, there are a couple of things in the book too that are a little incorrect, so we'll try to correct those as we go through as well. Uh the first one that they list was the Clayton Anti-Trust Act of nineteen fourteen. It's number twenty-one in the Body of Knowledge. And I was telling someone earlier, this presentation took me a lot longer than even the Next Gen nine oh one presentation to put together 'cause I originally had a slide for each of these and realized by the time I was done, that would take three hours to go through and and probably would not be on the test anyway. But the Clayton uh Anti-Trust Law was essentially um essentially was the first union law. It was the first law that allowed uh employees in certain in certain um industries to form unions. Prior to that, employers could say, no, we won't, we don't want our employees to, to form a union. That was it. It was really the employer had total control over that. Nineteen twenty-six was the Railway Labor Act. It officially required railroads, railroad companies to recognize the unions. So before that, unions, uh employees could form unions and the employer could say, well, we just don't recognize that union. We're not gonna sit down and negotiate with you. We're not gonna sign a contract. We're just gonna pretend like you don't exist. This act said, at least for railroad companies, you have to at least recognize the union that exists, sit down with them, negotiate, sign contracts. It was later amended to include airline companies. Those are the only two companies in the US that are required by law, the only two industries in the US that are required by law to recognize their unions. Uh the Norris Legordia Act, I'm gonna have to look that one up again myself, even though I wrote a slide on it yesterday. The Norris Legordia Act. Uh it basically uh confirmed the right of employees to strike or picket an employer. Um so remember I said, you know, the, the union, the company doesn't have to recognize the union? Well, one way to get them to recognize the union without forcing them by law is to strike or to picket the company until they agree to uh, agree to do that. The National Industry Recovery Act, um a lot of these kinda go back and forth on what they actually do. So National Industry Recovery Act um is one that would have required all employers in the US to recognize unions. The federal, the Supreme Court eventually struck that down. The Wagner Act, that's number twenty-four in the book. No, it's not. That's number seventeen in the book. Um The Wagner Act uh created the well, it was also known as the National Labor Relations Act, created the National Labor Relations Board. And um so it basically, it just, it, each one of these kinda goes further in recognizing the validity of, of, of uh labor unions. Taft-Hartley Act, it's also called the Labor Management Relations Act. Landrum, Landrum Griffin Act, Land, Labor Management Reporting and Disclosure Act. And here's kinda where things kind of um kinda start pruning back the power of unions. So this one actually does less to expand the power of unions than to hold them accountable. And the reason was because in the nineteen, early nineteen fifties, that's when you started seeing uh some mafia influence within the labor union movement. You started, you, you, everyone's heard of Jimmy Hoffa, right? He was basically a, a mafia boss that got involved in the Teamsters Union. And uh they were doing some really interesting things like taking the money from employee pension plans, which the unions run back then, instead of the employers. The, they were taking the money from the uh employee pension plans and using them to gamble in Las Vegas or to uh, to start uh casinos in Las Vegas. And so the uh, the Labor Management Reporting and Disclosure Act did a number of things like requiring um requiring standardized financial reporting by labor unions, required them to have secret elections. Uh because in the past, they would have, they would just raise their hands. So there was a lot of peer pressure and say, you gotta vote for our guy or we're not gonna, we'll make sure that you never get a promotion in this field or something like that, or maybe even something even more nefarious. So that, this act was meant to kind of bring um labor unions kind of into a, a realm of, of um professional behavior. And there's one executive order in this list as well. That's Executive Order ten nine eighty-eight. And that was the uh, the first executive order to deal with unions. So does anybody, does everybody know what an executive order is? As opposed to a law? So the president can issue an executive order without Congress or the Senate. And it only, because it, because it's not a law, it does, it can't affect private businesses, but it can affect everything that the federal government does. So it affects federal, federal employees and federal agencies. And it, if it says so in the, in the, in the executive order, it can also affect federal contractors. So it affects how the government operates itself and how federal contractors who work with the government operate. And it essentially says, if you're gonna do business with us as a contractor, then you have to follow these rules. Uh but Executive Order ten nine eighty-eight gave federal employees the right to unionize. So that was bid. Before that, federal, it was kind of up to individual agency heads to decide whether to allow federal employees to unionize or not. There are some exceptions in this. Security firms, CIA, the FBI, police, uh basically law enforcement agencies were not allowed to unionize under this, but pretty much everyone else was. So like the DMV employees and, and so forth. And um AFSMI, which is a weird name, but AFSMI is one of the biggest unions still around today. That's the American Federal State and um Federal State Employee Union, or something along those lines. That's not exactly right, but you get the idea. It's the, it's the union for federal and state employees essentially. So that's really all I'm gonna cover on, on these laws because the fact that you've never heard of any of these is because most of them don't really affect your day-to-day operations. If you work in a unionized shop, it's good to know how the progression of, of unionization happened in the United States and these laws impact that. Uh so I would review these in your book. Um but I wouldn't stress over them too much. At the most, what I think you should do is probably try to remember remember the names well enough that if you see it on your test, you know the law had something to do with unionization. Right? I think that's probably as close as we're gonna get it. So you might see something about the Wagner Act on the test and you'll, it'll give you four options and you'll want, what does the Wagner Act do? Well, it um it, it allows states to collect nine oh one surcharge fees. It does, that might be option A. Option B might be something to do with telecommunications. One of the four options might have something to do with unionization. That'll be your answer because it has nothing to do with telecommunications. It's about union laws.
But it won't make us list exactly which trust, which one is what?
Right, my, that's my guess. Okay. I can't guarantee what's on the test or what's not on the test. But I don't remember any questions on unionization on my test, and those are very obscure laws. The fact that they're in the book tells me that I, that you need to at least be familiar with them, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go through the trouble of memorizing which of those laws did, did what things with unions. As long as you remember the name of the law roughly, so that you can recognize it when it's written out. And that it has to do with unionization. I think that you'll be covered with that in that case. So we're gonna spend more time on these. These are employment standards laws. The first one, and the oldest one, and probably still the most important one, uh dealing with day-to-day operations of any business in the US, including nine oh one dispatch centers, is the Fair Labor Standards Act. It's usually just called FLSA. It was passed in nineteen thirty-eight. What was happening in nineteen thirty-eight?
Covid permanent stock market crash.
Yeah, it's uh, the uh Great Depression essentially. Um people were desperate for jobs and they would work any hours that were given to them. And basically, people were really getting taken advantage of. They were working, they were working, you know, sixteen-hour shifts, seven days a week and, and doing it for very little pay. So the Fair Labor Standards Act was meant to, to address some of those, uh some of those issues. It's in bold because it's important, but also because I have a separate slide to talk about the details of that. So we're gonna get to that in a little bit. But I'm gonna go through these other items first. The second item on that list is the Occupational Safety and Health Act nineteen seventy. Um so does anybody know what OSHA, the OSHA Act does?
Requires reporting of worksite accidents.
Requires reporting of worksite accidents. Um it also created an agency to review alleged violations of OSHA. And that agency, in coordination with other federal agencies, created specific rules that specific industries have to follow. They usually focus on the most, the most dangerous of industries, things like coal mining, things like oil rig, uh they call them roughnecks, that, that, that job where they're working on the, the oil rigs out in the field. Those are very, very dangerous professions, construction jobs. And basically, basically created rules that they have to follow. Um they're the ones that say that truck drivers can't work, can't drive for more than, I wanna say it's like eleven or twelve hours in a, in a day. They have to have eight hours of sleep between each driving shift. Before then, uh you could try to sue your employer if you were injured on the job, but very few people were successful. And there were no rules that said that employer had to do anything to try to make your work environment safer. Now, dispatch centers are essentially an office environment. They're fairly safe to begin with, but there are still hazards. Um and so if there's an, if there's a workplace injury, you still have to, you still have to report it, usually to the state, and the state deals with, deals with OSHA. But you have to, uh it is the employer's responsibility to do what they can to mitigate the worst hazards. What kind of hazards could there be in a dispatch center? Not necessarily your dispatch center, but any dispatch center.
There could be electrical, electric hazards, things like that.
Electrical hazards, so if there's poor wiring in the place, maybe they've re, they've jury rigged the uh, the electrical system several times to deal with um to deal with different upgrades and they didn't necessarily have somebody come in who knew what they were doing.
Narrow aisles for egress.
Yeah, only one way to get out. That's a, that is a problem in a lot of dispatch centers. If there's a fire and it's between you and the door and you're in the basement of a old dispatch center, you may not have another way to get out. You hope that, that fire, that fire suppression system works. A good fire suppression system is important, obviously. Most places, they have, um they fall under local codes on fire suppression anyway. But some dispatch centers may operate in a jurisdiction that doesn't. They still have, they're still responsible for making sure that their employees don't die in a fire because they didn't have a good sprinkler system. There are human hazards too. A lot of dispatch centers, especially the really small ones in the rural areas, the dispatchers are also the jailers. And they might have some contact with, with prisoners. They might be the ones who have to get up at three in the morning and feed the prisoners. Um they, the dispatch center might also have a walk-up window where they take walk-up reports. Is that walk-up window bulletproof? Is that walk-up, can somebody, is the door uh um secureable? You know, what are the hazards from interacting with the public? Uh it is the employer's responsibility to make sure that the employees are reasonably safe. No place is a hundred percent safe. You're always gonna have some injuries on the job just from people working there on, especially on a twenty-four seven, three sixty-five basis. But it's the employer's responsibility to mitigate those major hazards, anything that could result in a major, uh major injury or loss of life. Immigration Reform and Control Act nineteen eighty-six um basically makes it illegal to employ undocumented immigrants. Most dispatch centers don't really make a habit of that. Um but it does require that every employer in the US get I-nine forms when you hire a new employee, basically stating, yes, I've seen their birth certificate or something along those lines, proving that they're a US citizen, um and send that in. It, it requires the, the employer to make affirmative uh statement that their employees are US citizens and, and/or um allowed to work here. You don't have to be a US citizen. You can have a, a green card or a work visa. Uh the exception to that is um certain types of seasonal agricultural work. That's the only exception. The Employee Polygraph Protection Act nineteen eighty-eight. This might be, come as a surprise to people in our field, but in uh, in private businesses, it is illegal to polygraph your employees. Either before you're, you hire them or while they're in your employment. Government employees are exempt, are exempted. So that's why dispatch centers, because most of them are part of a local government, a city or county government. Uh that's why a lot of dispatch centers polygraph employees before they start work and may actually polygraph them during their employment if they feel that there's a need to do so. A lot of dispatch centers are getting away from that. I was in polygraph for um well, I wasn't polygraph for any of my jobs. I did polygraph for, for another job I didn't get, not because I failed the polygraph, I passed the polygraph. Uh but they um, um most dispatch centers don't do this anymore, but a lot do, especially those that are departments within a police department. If they're a service within a police department or a sheriff's office, they're more likely to do that because they already do that for their, for their deputies or their, um for their uh police recruits. Uh other examples, other exception, exemptions for this include security firms and pharmaceutical companies. Which is kind of interesting. So if you work for a pharmaceutical company, they can, they can polygraph you. They wanna make sure that nobody, you're not running off with uh with all of the Vibudin on, on your, on your days off. Um security companies, these could be like your armored car, your, your
You just want the containers.
The container. The store film in.
Sugar.
Exactly.
Yeah, whatever. Sorry about that, Gina. Just trying to make sure you can see the whole slide. Uh dispensaries?
Uh huh.
Um So like I said, we're gonna go a little bit more detail on the Fair Labor Standards Act. This is the most, probably the most likely of any of these laws to be on the test because it is important and because PSAPs do occasionally run afoul of this one. They do occasionally inadvertently violate it. It's commonly called FLSA, and like all of these, the laws that are in this section, they are a lot more complicated than what I'm showing here. These are just the highlights. So what does the FLSA do? FLSA requires that uh employers pay time and a half for hourly employees that work more than forty hours in a week. Um employees can define the beginning and the end of the week, but it has to be a one-week period. It exempts some form of police employees and firefighters, but dispatch centers are still covered. And that's where a lot, that's where some dispatch centers have gotten in trouble over this. They think, well, the police, the dispatch center is part of the police department. Police officers are exempted from FLSA. They can work as many hours as we want them to work and not pay them overtime. So the dispatchers, we don't have to pay them overtime either.
That's why a lot of the jails often swear in their officers.
Yeah. But and, and they're, they're on gray, they're on gray area doing that.
Yeah, they are.
For dispatchers though, the uh, the uh, the federal government, and this has gone to court, the federal government has said it doesn't matter whether they work in the police department. They're not police officers. They don't fulfill the duties of police officers. They're dispatchers. They're still covered under FLSA. Uh same thing for fire department, uh dispatch centers. There are dispatch centers that, that dispatch solely for fire departments. A lot of them, they get around this by using firefighters as their dispatch centers. The firefighter might work three, three days as a firefighter and work another day as a dispatcher. And that's how they do that. But if you are solely a dispatcher, if that's your only duty, then you still fall under FLSA. Do you have a question?
How does that work with volunteers and volunteer fire departments? Can they utilize volunteer firefighters for that position?
I don't, I've never heard of a dispatch center using volunteer firefighters for dispatching.
I just, I'm just out of curiosity.
But um they would probably not fall under employment laws because they're not getting paid.
Right.
They might be getting paid a stipend, but they're not getting paid a salary or, or a wage. Management employees are exempt. Uh they can be paid, and they can be paid a flat salary, and they usually are. They usually get, you get, this is how much you get per year. And they break it up into pay periods. But it doesn't matter whether you work you know, forty hours in an eighty-hour period. It doesn't matter if you work uh two hundred and seventy hours in a, an eighty-hour period. They're gonna pay you the same. Which is usually a bad deal for the management, but that's the way it goes. Uh I'm, I'm salaried myself, so I understand. Dispatch centers sometimes violate FLSA, and this is, this is why I wanted to pay more attention to this one. We already talked about how some of, some dispatch centers have gotten in trouble by trying to classify their dispatchers as law enforcement or firefighters, even though their, even though their duties were entirely dispatch-oriented. Uh so that's one way that dispatch centers can fall afoul of FLSA. Another way that dispatch centers sometimes run afoul of FLSA is by Another way that dispatch centers sometimes run afoul of FLSA is by redefining this period. And saying, okay, if you work more than eighty hours in a two-week pay period, then we'll pay you overtime. But if it's less than that, we won't. And it doesn't matter if you worked fifty hours in one week and thirty hours in another, they consider that eighty hours in an eighty hour pay period and so they don't pay you overtime. According to FLSA, that's against the law. They should have gotten overtime for that ten hours over forty in week one that they worked. Um, and a lot of dispatch centers do this because they're trying to help their employees. They're trying to do the nice thing by putting together some creative scheduling that allows like four days of twelves and three days off and. And what what ends up happening though is. A lot of times with those creative schedules, you end up with more than forty hours in one week and less than forty hours in the second week. And they think because it works out to eighty hours in an eighty hour pay period, that that's okay. But that's not what the law says, the law says it has to be forty hours in a forty hour pay period. The employer can say when that pay period or when not pay period, the the employees can say when that work week begins and when it ends. It could be Monday to Sunday, it could be Sunday to Saturday. But it has to be a one week period.
It's not specific to midnight either.
Right.
It could be noon or two in the afternoon or whenever they want, and it doesn't have to be the same for all employees.
That's true, good point.
We found that out, didn't we?
Yeah, we learned that the hard way.
Oh, they do that here?
No, we don't do that. We did when we were with the.
But it has to be seven twenty-four hour periods?
It has has to be s- seven twenty-four hour periods.
Right.
To count as a work week, but it doesn't have to be the same employees and it doesn't have to be at midnight.
Right, so the the, um. But the essence is that where where dispatch centers get in trouble is that some of them try to think of it as an eighty hour pay period, cause most of them have two week pe- pay periods. When really it needs to be measured every forty or every forty hour period, every week. Exempting shift supervisors from overtime even though they perform the same duties as the employee as line employees. Supervisors in different dispatch centers do different things depending on the dispatch center. Some dispatch centers, they may only only fill in on the radio occasionally, um, for maybe an hour or two a week. You know, when they're giving breaks or something like that, the rest of the time they're a supervisor and that's that is their job. In those cases, the supervisors could be exempt employees. And be paid a salary rather than and be hourly, and if you're salary again, you don't get overtime necessarily. But most dispatch centers have working supervisors, they have supervisors who they work on a console, at least some. You know, at least a couple shifts a week, sometimes they might work on a console all the time in addition to being a supervisor. In those cases, the supervisors are supposed to be hourly and paid overtime if they work more than forty hours in a week. Requiring or encouraging employees to attend briefings or training without pay. Everybody in this field is fairly dedicated to what they do and they wanna be up to date on on everything that happens. Uh, a lot of dispatch centers, especially with the creative scheduling that they do to try to make some in some some beneficial schedules for the employees. Will leave out things like briefings, but they still expect you to come in. Um, and we're not talking like a five or ten minute briefing where you where we might be talking about, you know, a one hour brief where you actually go and sit down in a room and they tell you everything that's happened in the last couple of shifts. But if they don't pay you for that, they're in violation of FLSA. If you're an hourly employee, you're supposed to get paid for every hour that you work. So those are some of the, so those are some of the pitfalls in FLSA that that dispatchers can come into, can anybody think of anything else?
Well, I'm just trying to correlate the difference between management and supervision or a long uh, frontline supervisor. When you, when you're looking at uh, discipline.
Mm-hmm.
And that sort of thing, what difference is, do you see there um, this Fair Labor Standards Acts?
Well, basically, basically what the case law says, I don't know how much of this isn't the Fair Labor Standards Act, cause it's evolved over time by people taking it to court for various things. Um, but what what the standards say today is that if your job duties. Look more like the person that you're supervising, then you're not management. So if you are, if your title is supervisor, but you spend most of your time doing the same stuff that the that the other employees are doing, then you're not management, you should be hourly. If you spend the majority of your time doing management stuff, meaning discipline, uh, meaning writing out the schedules for the week. Meaning all the stuff that your dispatchers don't do, then you're considered management.
And even management can still be hourly, which is based on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's really whether.
Yeah, so that's the option.
Yeah, exactly.
What when once you're considered management, the employer has the option of making you salaried, but they don't have to, they can still be hourly if they want you to be.
Okay, but it doesn't have anything to do with like, um. Maybe I'll wait, I'll wait later.
Okay. You know, you mentioned you mentioned earlier like disciplinary yeah, actions, if you're if you're writing up disciplinary actions, that's a management function. That's something that you're that the employees are not doing, that the frontline employees are not doing.
Okay.
So that would count towards, you know, you being a management personnel, but if you. You could do that, but if it's only like a couple hours a week and the rest of the time you're on the radio like everyone else, then you should be hourly.
Okay, but there's nothing in the Fair Labor Standard Acts that addresses the difference between management supervision, how they'd be handled? A a disciplined manner.
Oh, no, no, it it has to do with how you're paid. It doesn't, it doesn't get into things like, you know, whether you should be under the same disciplinary proceedings as someone else. Okay. Next broad category is anti-discrimination law, there's a lot on here, there's more than I thought existed. Putting together this presentation, looking through the book, there's they they got into some real minutia. Because again, because it's in the book, it might be on the test. I'm gonna spend more time on the things that I think are more likely to be on the test, uh, but we're gonna go, we're gonna go through all of it. Equal Pay Act nineteen sixty-three is the earliest one that's in there, in fact, it's number one in in the body of knowledge, starting on page, what was it, one forty-eight? Yes, one forty-eight. Equal Pay Act made it illegal to officially pay women less than men.
Is it still happening?
That's that was that, I have a put discussion point on here, why is it still happening? Because you hear reports all the time, women are paid seventy or seventy-five cents for every dollar that that men make for the same jobs.
Most recent one that went to court was Walmart, that I remember.
Mm-hmm. The reason why it's still happening is because there's an exception for merit-based pay systems. So where they do an evaluate, do an annual evaluation and based on how well you perform in that evaluation, they say, okay, we're gonna give you. A hundred percent of your raise, or we're gonna give you fifty percent of your raise, or we're gonna give you no raise at all. And. The argument that's made about why that should change is that merit-based pay systems are much more um, subjective, right? It's up to the individual person doing the evaluation to determine whether the person's doing the job well or not. Most dispatch centers are part of city and county governments. And therefore they don't have merit-based pay, they have annual pay increases that you either get or you don't get. Is that how you guys do it?
We do uh, s- defined steps.
Defined steps, exactly.
Yeah, so if you meet a minimum on yours, so it's still somewhat merit-based.
Right.
But if you meet a minimum on your uh, performance evaluation, you get a step up.
It's 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 somewhat merit-based because you either get it or you don't get it.
Yeah.
But they won't be able, they don't, they're not able to give you like half of it or.
Right, it's always that big step.
Right, and that's that's how most dispatch centers are.
Yeah.
Uh, because they're part of city and county governments and that's that's kind of traditionally how local governments um, manage their pay systems. Um, so it might not affect you, um, but it's important to know. For the purposes of the test, that that is the law that made it officially illegal to have a different pay scale. Cause before then, an employer could literally have, okay, this is our male pay scale, this is our female pay scale. And it was literally legal for them to do that. And uh, uh, this is, that's the law that made that illegal. Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, it's in bold because I've got a separate slide on it and that's one that you probably should know more about and be familiar with for the test, so we're gonna, we're gonna skip that for now. This is what surprised me is that they included these executive orders in the book, I'd never thought of including executive orders. So executive order twelve, eleven twelve forty-six and eleven three seventy-five. How important is it to memorize the number of the executive order? I I don't think it's that important, but I can't guarantee it. Again, I I don't have foreknowledge of what's on the on the test. These require all federal contractors to institute affirmative action plans. Um, and it was on certain classes, so race, sex, um, national origin, religion. The first one twelve, eleven twelve forty-six included those and eleven three seventy-five added age, I believe it was. So that's why there's there's two of them, one, the eleven three seventy-five just expanded a little bit. It also, um, the eleven twelve forty-six only required it on federal contractors that received. A certain amount of money, I think it was ten thousand dollars, it's in the book, if you wanna know the details. That received up uh, ten thousand dollars a year in federal contracts and the second one took away that minimum, so it applied to all federal contractors. Um, it's essentially been superseded by by later laws, but if you were a dispatch center in nineteen sixty-six. For a local county or city government, might it might it have affected you?
Likely.
Could have, if you were um, dispatching any agents for any federal agents for local, for uh, federal agencies that were working locally. Um, I don't know if you guys do here, in my last job, we dispatched for BLM, we dispatched for uh, federal park rangers because they didn't have anybody else to dispatch for. And we got payment from those federal agencies for those services. I don't think we broke the ten thousand dollar mark, but as I said, with eleven uh, three seventy-five, they took away that that minimum anyway, so it would have affected us. Age Discrimination in Employment Act nineteen sixty-seven, this is one place where the book seems to be a little confused. It seems to confuse this one with this one, these are two separate laws. So the first one that I'm talking about is the Age Discrimination in Employment Act, the one I'll talk about later is just the Age Discrimination Act. Don't you love politicians, they could have given it a slightly different name. But the first one we're gonna talk about is Age Discrimination in Employment Act. It essentially says that you can't discriminate against someone for employment if they're over the age of forty years of age for their age. So let's say you have someone who's thirty-five and applies for a job at your place and it takes a lot of physical demand, let's say, um. Let's say that you have another employee, another applicant who's twenty-five and looks to be in better physical shape, is it legal to discriminate against them?
According to the.
It actually is.
Yeah.
It actually is, cause that's the only one we got, right? A co- that that law uh, is still the one that that's in in place today, it may seem wrong. Now the weird thing is, someone comes in, they're forty-one years old.
Yeah.
And the other guy's twenty-five, you wouldn't be able to discriminate in that case because he meets that forty-year mark.
So they find another reason to employ.
They find another reason, yeah, sure. But but the point is, you you cannot, you cannot officially discriminate against someone uh, for their age, but that only kicks in once they're forty years of age. And the the, the reason was, a lot of, you know, especially this is back when pensions were still a thing, where employers. Were basically just setting money aside for you and paying you out when you retire. They didn't want to hire people who are gonna be retiring in twenty years, they wanted to hire people who are gonna be retiring in forty years. So that's, they wouldn't hire people if they were over the age of forty, and so that's basically made it illegal to do that. Executive Order eleven four seventy-eight. Uh, ordered federal agencies, again, executive orders only affect federal agencies or federal contractors, they don't affect state and local governments, they don't affect. Um, um, private companies, but a lot of dispatch centers are also federal contractors. So eleven, Executive Order eleven four seventy-eight ordered federal agencies not to discriminate against the handicapped. And that's the terminology they use, that shows you how things have changed, today they would not say the handicapped. Um, but that's, that was the executive order, so federal agencies could not discriminate against the handicapped. Vocational Rehabilitation Act nineteen seventy-three. This one's not an executive order, but it does apply to federal contractors. And it requires, it basically takes that executive order one step further, puts it into law. And also says, by the way, you also have to have an affirmative action plan for the disabled. What is an affirmative action plan? Crickets.
Yeah.
Having equitable amounts of different races?
A lot of people, a lot of people think affirmative action means quotas.
Yeah.
So you have to have X percentage of of African-Americans, you have to have X percentage of people with Hispanic background or Hispanic heritage.
Which just means you give them all an equal opportunity.
It means you give them equal opportunity, but affirmative action is just one step further than that in saying that you have a plan for recruiting people from protected classes. So let's say you, it's a dispatch center in a urban environment, let's say Denver for instance. And they have, they have an African-American population, they have a Latin American population. An affirmative action plan would mean that they have a plan for recruiting that includes reaching out specifically to those communities. So it might be going to African-American churches, it might be going, it might be posting your job on a, on a job board. At a, at a Hispanic-American cultural center, something along those lines. So that's what an affirmative action plan, doesn't mean you have to have a certain quota, it doesn't mean you actually even have to hire. Up from from races in a certain, uh, from different races in a certain amount. It just means that you have to do, you have to take actual, that's where the affirmative part comes from, it means you have to take proactive action. To try to recruit from those areas, to get them to at least apply, yes.
Could that action be a generalized resource that everybody could access, being indie dot com?
It it can be, I mean, that that's, it that's better than only advertising in places where, you know, one race can apply. We'll we'll see the job ad, but not not other races. And and it doesn't apply only to races, uh, in this case, it applies to the disabled.
Right.
But it can also apply to people of different gen-, you know, different genders, if you, if you've got eighty percent of your workforce is male or eighty percent of your workforce is female, you might have a. You might have an issue with not reaching out to um, uh, the other, the other gender. It can apply to national origin, it can apply to religion. Um, and usually it it, it's usually only scrutinized in areas where there is a, let's see, well, let's think about Ferguson, Missouri, right? Ferguson, Missouri overwhelmingly, that's not a good word to use, uh, to a large majority is African-American. Um, on a police force of twenty officers, only one officer is black. And that's part of the the public image problem, that that's part of that whole, that whole issue. Um, that's an area where if they have an affirmative action plan, it probably didn't work very well.
And that's still only applies to federal contractors.
Well, in this case, with the disabled one, it does, it applies to federal contractors only. Age just, you go ahead.
Handicapped?
What's that?
They have to come up with a plan that at least makes themselves viable.
So federal contractors then, um. Under the Vocational Rehabilitation Act, have to do things to reach out to the disabled community to encourage them to apply or at least know about the jobs so that they can apply.
You still hire the best candidate.
You still hire the best candidate. And and the best practice is, you work and like I said, um. Carl Simpson is gonna talk to you about employee selection. But the best practice is, everything in your job selection process should be job-related only, right? You wanna make it as close to being a test of what they will actually be able to do on the job. Uh, and that's what you hire based on, uh, and that keeps you out of trouble. But affirmative action means you at least have to go out to those communities and let them know that the jobs are available. Uh, Age Discrimination Act, so we already talked about the Age Discrimination in Employment Act. The Age Discrimination Act of nineteen seventy-five is a little bit different. It has to do with programs and activities and it's not clear right away how that affects employment. Uh, but I'll give you an example from from the dispatching or police world. Lot of communities, a lot of police departments have citizen police academies. Some dispatch centers have dispatch acad-, citizen dispatch academies, but those are pretty rare. But citizen police academies are fairly popular, and one of the, the purposes of those are are multifold, one is just to. Educate interested people in the public as to what the police department does, how the police department works, what what kind of services the police department offers. But another purpose of those is to recruit as well. You get especially get, uh, you know, some high school students or some some just out of high school individuals come into the police, the citizens' police academy. Just to learn more about police work. the citizens' police academy just to learn more about police work, and maybe that's something that they wanna do later. There's always a section on dispatch where they go and they take them into the dispatch center and show them the, show them how dispatch works. Uh, they might have them sit sit in for for a ride along with the dispatcher to listen to nine one one calls and things like that. But let's say that at one point they're having a Q and A about dispatch operations in the in the the um citizens' police department. And the person facilitating the meeting, the instructor, says, dispatch is really hard, takes a lot of multitasking. Okay, both of those are true. Older people really should think twice about applying for that job because it's just so much harder for older people to to multitask and to to learn all of the new things they have to learn. They have just violated the Age Discrimination Act by discouraging older employees from applying. That's really all that is. The examples they give in the book, uh, let's say there's a community computer training class just to help people learn how to use computers. And uh, there's there's discussion of computer-related jobs in that class. And they do the same thing, they say, you know, younger people pick this stuff up like this, but if you're an older person, you really shouldn't even try to get this job. They've violated the Age Discrimination Act, it's it's meant to stop publicly funded programs and activities from discouraging older people to apply for jobs. Essentially what it comes down to. Any questions on there Gina? Doing okay? Okay, good. The second page, I told you there was a lot on anti-discrimination laws, the second page of anti-discrimination laws, uh, the Vietnam Era Veterans Readjustment Act. It applies to federal contractors, doesn't apply to the rest of the the world. Uh, but it banned discrimination against veterans and required affirmative action programs for veterans. So if you've ever applied for a federal job or a job with a federal contractor, you'll notice one of the questions they ask you. And a lot of local governments do this too because they have similar policies in place even though it's not required. But they'll ask you if you're a veteran, when you served, how you were discharged, and so on. Um, and part of that was because of the Vietnam Era Veterans Readjustment Act nineteen seventy-five. It requires federal contractors, the federal government was already doing it, but requires federal contractors to have to basically give extra credit on applications to veterans. Um, and it also banned discrimination against veterans, which you wouldn't think would be necessary, but apparently it was because they had to make a law on it, you wouldn't think that people would do something as as low as discriminate against veterans, but they were. Pregnancy Discrimination in Employment Act nineteen seventy-eight. This is, um, it's amazing, and this is one that I've I've actually, uh, had a little experience with because I had a employee or an applicant come to work, come to apply for a job at at the dispatch center that I've worked at before. She was about three or four months pregnant, she mentioned the fact that she was pregnant in the interview. And it was a panel interview, and one of the supervisors that was in the panel with me came up to me later and said, we can't hire her, she's gonna be like three months into training, she's gonna be on maternity leave. And I said, you can't, you can't take that into consideration. She might have her have to have her training interrupted, maybe even have to restart her training when she comes back from maternity leave, but it is illegal to take that into consideration, and that law is the reason why. You cannot discriminate against a woman for being pregnant. And the law specifically says regardless of marital status, remember this is nineteen seventy-eight, so a woman came in, was pregnant, didn't have a wedding ring on her finger, the employer might look at that and say, oh, this woman's not responsible, I'm not gonna hire her. That's a moral judgment that is not, that should not be part of the selection process, and the uh this law makes it illegal in fact. Um, you also can't discriminate against a woman for having had an abortion. If you're getting into that much personal detail with your job applicants, then you're doing your app, you're doing your interviews wrong.
We might have other.
That's really not something that you should be asking.
So have you ever had an abortion?
Yeah, um, but uh in nineteen seventy-eight, they felt it was necessary to put that into law, apparently some employers were asking that. The Americans with Disabilities Act nineteen ninety, that one's in bold because I have it on a separate screen in more detail, so we're gonna go into more detail on that. Older Worker Benefit Protection Act nineteen ninety. Apparently, prior to nineteen ninety, some employers were going to their older employees, the ones getting ready to retire, and saying, you know, pensions aren't really all that, all they're uh made out to be, you should really just waive your rights to your pension and maybe take a slightly bigger, uh, take a slight pay increase instead, so we don't have to pay you a pension later. And the older employee might not wanna do that, but they're like, well, if I don't do it, they're gonna find a way to fire me, so I better do it. There were employers that were pressuring older employees into waiving their rights to certain benefits. And this law made that illegal. Most of this is like, just be a decent person to employees, really, you know, is what it comes down to. Executive Order thirteen oh eighty-seven, one three oh eight seven nineteen ninety-eight prohibits federal agencies, doesn't apply to anyone else, prohibits federal agencies from discriminating on on the basis of sexual orientation. The obvious exception, considering this was nineteen ninety-eight, was the military.
Which it does.
Because that's just recently changed. But uh at the time, it applied to everyone except the the military, they could not discriminate based on sexual orientation. Again, that applies to federal agencies only. Is it illegal to discriminate against someone for their sexual orientation in private companies or in local governments?
To protect a class, right?
Not Colorado, Colorado, it's illegal. You cannot discriminate against someone for their sexual orientation in Colorado. But it goes state by state, about half the states still do not have laws on the books, so if you ever get a job managing a call center in another state, that might be something you need to know. Um, again, best practice is, you hire people based on their ability to do the job, not on anything else. But if you did discriminate against someone for their sexual orientation, you say, well, I think this person might be gay, so I'm not gonna hire him. Uh, because my officers on the radio won't like the sound of their voice or something, the gayness of them. Um, then depending on what state you're in, you might still be within the law. In Colorado, you are not, it is illegal in Colorado to discriminate based on sexual orientation or gender identity. Uh, so those are important things to know.
Because I grew up in the South, why can't I be surprised?
The world is changing, some people just can't handle it.
You have to move north to learn that, right?
What's that?
Said you had to move north to learn that?
If that's what this is.
Northish.
Ish.
North more than where you're from.
That's right. You're not in Boulder, but you're not in Savannah, Georgia anymore either.
That's right.
Uh, Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty-four, like I said, I was gonna go into more detail on this, so this falls under those anti-discrimination laws. Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty-four prohibits discrimination in employment based on sex, race, color, national origin, and religion. And it's kind of interesting going back through the the evolution of anti-discrimination laws in America. It's all list-based, right? They list all these different classes, and then ten years later, somebody says, well, we should really add this group, and then they add that group. Really, if you're following best practice, it doesn't matter because you're just hiring the best person for the job and you're not taking into account anything that's irrelevant. In best, in in practice, it also prohibits discrimination even if it's inadvertent. So this is what's come out through the uh the case law. People have said, well, company X, Y, or Z uh discriminate against me based on my race. And they take they go take it to court, and the company says, well, look, we didn't discriminate based on against them based on their race, we used our selection process. If the court finds that your selection process inadvertently favors one race over another, you're in violation of the Civil Rights Act. An example might be, they give you a, an IQ test that uh has terminology on there, what does this word mean, what does that word mean, and it's all culturally based. Things that a person of one race would be more likely to know than a person of another race. Then it's in violation of the anti-discrimination or the Civil Rights Act. And that's one reason, by the way, why most places don't use IQ tests as part of their their uh their job selection process. Any tool that you come up with for selection process, you have to be careful to avoid those inadvertent, that inadvertent discrimination. The term, I put adverse impact, I think the term you you more like, you're more likely to hear in the law is disparate impact. If the if your selection process has a disparate impact on any of those, any of those uh classes. Let's say part of your um, part of your test, and I'm just gonna throw out a a stereotype example here, and it's very stereotyped because I'm not a sports fan. But let's say you have a test, as part of your 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 selection test, you have an IQ test that has questions about football on it. Let's go with the stereotype, just for the minute, just for a moment, that men are more knowledgeable about football than women. You are discriminating against women with that test.
Until the woman gives you that.
Until the, yeah. Today, I'm not sure that would even count because a lot of women are knowledgeable about football, and I don't know anything about it because I don't follow sports.
My example is what time is high tea?
What time is high tea?
That's right.
That would be discriminating against people who are not from England.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't know. So it's kind of complicated, hard to hard to describe, but you know, once you get some specific examples, you can kind of see what they're trying to get at. Um, and really, it comes down to a a subjective judgment call on the part of the jury or the judge who's looking at this, trying to decide if if the selection material, the testing has a disparate impact on one protected class. The way to avoid this is to make sure that everything you test on is purely job-related. Make it as close to job-related as possible. That's why most dispatch centers don't do IQ tests, because it's testing your IQ, it's not testing your ability to do the job. You do testing that ha- that relates to the job, you guys use Criticall, don't you?
Yeah.
You guys use Criticall? So Criticall, I don't know if you do Gina, but Criticall is testing software that is written specifically to test your ability to work uh on tasks, computer, computer-related tasks that are mirrored off of what you do on the dispatch floor. That's the best type of of selection material you can use, stuff that um that mirrors exactly what you're gonna be doing in the job. Um, the Civil Rights Act also created the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission, the EEOC, most people have heard of the EEOC. If you make a complaint uh that you've been discriminated against, it's um uh, the EEOC is usually the first group that will look at that, sometimes it'll go to a state body first, a lot of states have set up their own EEOC commissions. So it'll go to the state EEOC, and it might end up going to the federal EEOC. And they usually try to resolve issues within that commission, so it doesn't have to go to court. That's part of the reason of the of having the EEOC. And it, uh, the EEOC enforces the Civil Rights Act, but other acts that came later, like the uh, like the Age Discrimination in Employment Act, the EEOC got jurisdiction over those two. So just because it was created by the Civil Rights Act, doesn't mean that the EEOC is restricted to only the Civil Rights Act as their jurisdiction. And it created a set of rules that incorporates uh all of the requirements of the various anti-discrimination laws. So if you're interested, I'll put this link on the uh on the website when I upload the um the presentation. But the Uniform Guidelines, you know, on employee selection procedures, that's a set of guidelines that they, that the EEOC created and basically said, if you follow these guidelines, you're not gonna run afoul of any of the anti-discrimination, anti-discrimination laws that are on the books. The uh body of knowledge lists, on one forty-seven, that's the big list at the front, they list the E- Equal Employment Opportunity Act. There is no such thing, it's the Civil Rights Act, so that's one of the errors I was talking about in the book. I realize I'm over on time, I'm sorry, I cut this down, it's still taking a long time. Uh, Americans with Disabilities Act nineteen ninety, commonly known as the ADA. Um, in addition to the FLSA, I would say this is probably the the most likely one to be on the test. FLSA and the ADA are probably the most important ones for you to know. Basically says that you can't discriminate against applicants or current employees for having a disability. Current employees either, so you have an employee that wasn't disabled when you hire them, and then they develop diabetes later and need special, um, they need extra breaks for checking their blood sugar or for taking insulin treatments. You can't say, well, that's just too bad, you gotta leave, uh, you can't do that. So you can't discriminate against applicants or existing employees for disabilities. Employee or applicant must be able to perform major job duties without reasonable accommodation. This is one of the horror stories that came out as soon as this law passed, people started saying, well, we're gonna have to hire people who can't even do the job now. Well, no, that's that's not true, the applicant has to at least be able to do the major job functions. What is a major job function? Well, let's say, trying to use dispatch environment as an example. Um, once every two or three days, somebody has to haul out a box of printer paper for the NCIC printer, I don't know if you guys even have an NCIC printer in there anymore, but back in the old days, you had an NCIC dot matrix printer that you had to replace the uh, the feed paper on every once in a while, and the box was heavy. Let's say you have a disability that kept you from lifting that box. Would that be enough to deny the person the job? No, because it's a very, very small part of the job, and there are other people in the dispatch center who could do it if you're not able to do it. Right, so that's not a major job function. Being able to hear people on the radio would be a major job function, being able to talk on the telephone is a major job function. Being able to type is a major job function. And even then, employers are required to provide reasonable accommodation, if there's something the employer can do to change the work environment, to allow you to do those major job functions, then you still have to consider them equally with all other applicants.
So if they have, if you have words-per-minute requirement and they take what they're told, you have to directly let that through?
If they could type, if they could read, if they could meet all your other, your, all your other uh requirements, like typing speed, then yes.
You mean if they pick up the phone.
If they can't, so no matter how they type, if they can reach that typing speed, then they're still fine?
Yeah, it comes down to having standards for doing the actual job, and if they can do it, then they can do it. Um, but other accommodations do require some, you know, that, in that case, it's not really, it's it's really not, the only thing you'd have to change is your rule about wearing shoes in the dispatch center.
And and that's an accommodation, but now it, because of the the fact that there's an obvious disability, can you require that individual to versus other, or I guess you would just have that same requirement to prove, you know, somebody with hands, they would have to prove also that they can take words.
Right.
It has to be.
It's the, it needs to be the same test.
So you can never, you can never say, well, you know, we need to see that you can do this, but we can check.
Same test, so if you don't test, people, if, so in your example, person, if you've got two applicants, one who has hands and one who doesn't entice with their feet. You, if if you don't give a test, if you don't give a typing test to the person with hands, you can't give the typing test to the person who ties with their feet.
So I mean, we can all assume that we can pick up phones with our hands, so you can't look at the person with no hands and go.
Well, what you can do is, you can ask them, say, you know, these are the, these are the major job functions.
Right.
You know, we expect you to be able to pick up the phone and talk to somebody, we expect, are you able to complete all of those major job functions without additional assistance? They say no, you say, okay, what kind of assistance would you need? And if it's something that is, falls under the the term reasonable accommodation, which is a little bit of a gray area, then it's something that you have to, um, you cannot take that disability into account, doesn't mean you have to hire them. You still hire the best person for the job, but it means you don't take that into account when you're deciding who the best person for the job is. Here's some other examples of reasonable accommodation. You, you're dispatching in a room closet and you can't get the the, the desk is just a little too narrow for a wheelchair to get through to. Well, a reasonable accommodation would be to rearrange that so a person with a wheelchair could reach it. Uh, reasonable accommodation might be providing different lighting for for an employee with poor vision and low lighting. Let's say you've got fine vision, so long as there's plenty of light, some people have bad, uh, low-light vision only. And all they ask for is more lighting, that's a very reasonable accommodation. Computer monitor with vision impairment accessibility features, you know, most dispatch centers, you know, you've gotta be able to read the screen. A lot of places don't test based on your ability to read the screen. But if the, if the person says, look, I have a slight vision impairment, but I can, I can still do this job if I have, you know, Windows comes with that magnifying glass feature, if I still, if I have that, if I have access to that on my computer screen, that's a reasonable accommodation. You have an employee with diabetes, um, who needs regular breaks for glucose monitoring and insulin treatments? Is that a reasonable accommodation or not? It might be, in most dispatches, it probably is. It might be, in most dispatch centers, it probably is. Because you have other people who can give them breaks. In a one-person dispatch center, it might not be. So a lot of it's depends on the, um, on the environment of, of the place of employment.
Now, like insulin treatments and stuff can be subjective to alternate laws too. I mean, if you can do or accommodate yourself while sitting, you know, the application, I mean, I, I don't think there's anything that gives law for me to lift my shirt up in, in a dispatch center.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know.
But we did have a situation years ago where we had somebody who was diabetic, and she would give herself her injections, and we had another dispatcher there that just went off the rails for that because it grossed her out, and she created all sorts of drama over it. So I don't know, at what point do you force the diabetic employee to leave the room? I mean.
Right.
I'd probably tell the other person to grow up and.
But that.
If you don't like it, don't look.
Don't look, yeah.
I mean, if your policy doesn't account for that, then
Right.
I mean, they're not doing anything wrong.
Or if you do, for some reason they have a policy that says you cannot lift up your shirt in the dispatch center for any reason, then that, that might be a reasonable accommodation, is making an exception to that rule for that employee.
But if your policy defines, you can't inject medical or utilize medical devices within your working environment, are you going against ADA?
If you have a policy that says that you can't?
Yeah, so if you're saying you can't put.
I, I would say you're probably in violation of ADA.
You can't put that needle in your arm and just answer, two doesn't like to put that needle in your arm.
Yeah.
There, is, is it their problem, or is it?
It, it's their problem.
Right.
I mean, the law says you have to make a reasonable accommodation. You know, and the reasonable accommodation might be, okay, we got dispatchers who don't wanna see that, so we're gonna ask you to take a break. But if you, and you provide a break, that's still a reasonable accommodation, I mean, so they're still able to take care of their medical problem. But, you know, if they can't take a break, then a reasonable accommodation would be allow them to take their insulin injection on the floor. Uh, another real-world example, my last dispatch center, I had an employee who was so allergic to peanuts that anybody in the room who ate something with peanuts in it, she would get a migraine fifteen minutes later. I know she wasn't faking, because she didn't even know that they were eating it, and she like, I have a migraine starting, did somebody eat something with peanuts? So we had, we had to make a rule, you can't eat anything with peanuts on the dispatch floor. And you cannot believe the amount of griping that I got from the other employees. Well, this is just ridiculous.
Oh, yes.
Now you infect everybody else in the dispatch center. Well, sorry, that's the ADA. And frankly, it's not that much of an inconvenience for you to avoid peanuts for your shift. It's one food, you can eat other foods.
I'm a toe-to-toe with a parent over that.
Right.
It's a peanut-free table.
Laws, so moving on, cause I know we're running over, way over here on time. Laws concerning employee benefits. Social Security Act is the first one they have listed in there, nineteen thirty-five. It's weird, because that one is listed, and then you see this a few times, it's listed in the outline at the beginning of the book. It's not listed in here at all. So do you need to know it for the test? I don't know. I'm gonna have to write them a letter, and write Nina a letter and say, there are a few things in the, uh, in the, the legislation part that you need to fix. But the important thing to know from, from the viewpoint of employee benefits, it does a lot of things, create the social security program, that doesn't really affect you in your job, it affects you personally. But what it does is requires all employees to, uh, employers to, uh, pay into employment insurance. Unemployment insurance, I should say. Uh, unemployment insurance works for employees who are terminated through no fault of their own. This deals, how many times do we cut back on personnel, cause we can't afford it in the dispatch center? Not very often. It happens occasionally, but not very often. But other types of employment where, you know, if you work in a, you work in a candy store, and they just don't have the, they just don't have as many customers as they used to, because there's a vending machine down the hall now. And they don't, they can't afford as many employees, so they lay you off. You would be eligible for unemployment insurance. You're fired, and the employer can't give a real good reason for why you're fired, you're eligible for unemployment insurance. You're fired because you could not meet the requirements of the job, or for gross negligence, or for violating policy, you are not eligible for unemployment insurance. Um, and that comes into play when you get a call from whatever state unemployment agency it is, that's processing their, their claim, and says, why was this person fired? You just give them exactly the reason why you fired them, or terminated them. It might not really be a firing, it might be laying, laying them off or whatever. Um, and they will make the determination as to whether they're entitled to the unemployment insurance or not. Employee Retirement Income Security Act. It's a mouthful, nineteen seventy-four, required financial responsibility and provided guarantees for employee pension plans. Employee pension plans are kinda going extinct now. Most places, they'll pay into a 401K or something instead, which is a retirement investment plan, not a pension plan. But in the old days, and some of the big companies still do this, they actually put money aside for you, and will pay you a retirement pension when you retire. Um, and prior to nineteen seventy-four, there were no rules to make sure that those stayed solvent or not. Uh, after nineteen seventy-four, because of this law, there were. Uh, there are a lot of people, there were a lot of people that were, that were hurt by those. Employee pension plans would go belly up, and it's like, oh, you worked for us for forty-five years, sorry, you're on your own.
Yeah, we spent it.
We spent it. Cobra Consolidated Omnibus Reconciliation Act. That is the, that is probably the law with the two most different names. You have Cobra. Sounds very exciting and dangerous. And the other, the real name is the Consolidated Omnibus Reconciliation Act, which tells you absolutely nothing about it.
What the hell does omnibus mean?
Well, it, basic, omnibus is a, is a law that, basically, they have a whole bunch of stuff they need to pass at once, and they put it all in one law. And that's why the name doesn't tell you anything, but part of that law, and the part that we call Cobra, has to do with employee insurance, health insurance, when you leave an employer. And it basically said that once you leave that employer, you can take that insurance with you if you want. So if you are, if you leave a job, whether you, whether you were terminated, or left on your own volition, or were laid off, you can sign up with Cobra, and the insurer, the, uh, employer has to continue to cover you on their health insurance plan. The drawback is, you have to pay the full cost of it. The employer doesn't have to kick anything in for you. Most employers kick in quite a bit on health insurance plans. I was shocked when I left my, uh, I left my job in Springfield, Missouri for my first supervisor gig in, uh, Wisconsin. And my insurance didn't kick in for three months in Wisconsin, so I was gonna go on Cobra for three months. And I was paying like one fifty a month for my health insurance. And they said, okay, well, you can stay on it, under Cobra, you can stay on your health insurance, but we don't have to put anything in for you. So you're gonna have to pay the full cost of it, which is nine hundred dollars a month. Thanks, no, no thank you.
Hopefully I live three months.
Yes, hopefully I'll live three months. So Cobra, you know, back in nineteen eighty-six, it might have been more useful than it is today, health insurance plans are so expensive that most employees cannot afford it on their own. One thing that I didn't realize until I was reading about this for this, for putting this presentation together, is that it also applies to other beneficiaries on the plan. So let's say an employee dies, they have their wife on their plan, or spouse, could be husband. They have their spouse on their health plan, but the employee dies, that spouse can, can sign up for Cobra and stay on that health insurance plan. But again, they have to pay the full.
In their time period too, that they have, that they have to let you still opt into that? Like you don't have to do it the day after you leave or get?
I don't know, I think, I think you're correct, I think they have, I think you have up to like ninety days or something like that.
Period zone, that, so like on the ninetieth day, if you're not insured, you can still opt into the Cobra, and it covers back?
I believe you're right.
To the point.
I believe you're right.
Of course you're gonna pay for that back.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta pay all the premiums.
Right.
Now again, because it's so darn expensive these days, most people don't do this anymore, and the ADA, or the ACA, which we'll talk about kind of replaces it to some extent. Family Medical Leave Act, it's involved, cause it's a, it's an important one. Uh, so we'll go into that in more detail. Patient Protection Affordable Care Act, also known as the ACA, also known as Obamacare, depending on your politics. That was enacted in two thousand and ten, really the only thing that, that affects, that affects anyone who wants insurance who doesn't have it. But, or doesn't want insurance and doesn't have it. But the only way that employee, that affects employers is that any employer with fifty or more employees have to now offer health insurance plans, whereas in the past it was optional. Um, most city and county governments already offered health insurance plans. It's kind of a good employment practice, um, anyway, so it didn't really affect, uh, most dispatch centers.
And that doesn't require an employer to pay into it necessarily?
That's true, just, just that they have to offer a group plan. So going into more detail, we're almost done. Going into more detail on the federal, uh, see, you got me doing it. The Family Medical Leave Act nineteen ninety-three. Um, requires employers to provide up to twelve weeks of unpaid leave, in total, during any twelve-month period for specific uses. Those uses are birth, adoption of a child, or foster care placement. So if you get a new child into your life, whether it was through birth or through adoption, uh, it still counts. And you have to take time off to, to arrange that. Leave to care for a spouse, child, or parent who has a serious medical condition, so you have to take care, your, your parent has it's a terrible example, your parent has terminal cancer, and you wanna be with them, uh, to help take care of them in the hospice. You could take medical leave act for that. Or a serious health, health condition affecting yourself, to the point that you cannot perform your major job functions. When this first came out, I remember some of the hysteria about it, it's like, oh, we can't pay these people? Well, no, it specifically says unpaid. Um, so you can take up to twelve weeks of unpaid time, it does not require the employer to pay you during that time. So really, the only thing it requires the employer, employer to do is hold your position for you. So you can take up to twelve weeks, and they cannot hire someone else to take the job and, and fire you because you weren't there. They have to hold your position for you, you come back. They cannot take away any of your seniority, they cannot take away any of the other benefits that you have, um, during that time. You are essentially, um, just on hiatus for that twelve weeks.
Specifically say their seniority? In the FMLA or?
Yes. Yep.
You can.
They can't deny you anything that you would normally attain if you were here.
Right.
You can put somebody in that interim position?
You can hire someone temporarily.
Or bring somebody internally into that position?
Replace them.
You just can't replace them permanently, correct. If, um, now, one option employers have that they cannot, that can exercise or not, but most employers do, is they will require you to, uh, use up all of your vacation and sick time during those twelve weeks. So let's say you go on FMLA, and you have three weeks of vacation time on the books. They may require you to use up that three weeks of vacation time for the first three weeks of that twelve-week period. Which in some ways is good for the employee, cause at least they're getting paid something. Um, but it also means that you don't have any vacation time when you get back. So it's kind of a, you know, a lot, a lot of people freaked out, because it was, they thought it would create this huge burden on employers. I've only seen it used once, um, since it was in, in, in my personal, uh, working life. The first dispatch center I worked at, it was shortly after, shortly after this was passed, in fact, there was a guy who, uh, decided he wanted to take, uh, but, but his wife was having a difficult pregnancy, he wanted to take maternity leave to, or paternity leave to help his wife out, and so he did, he took like four or five weeks off. He didn't get paid, he got paid for part of it, and when his vacation ran out, he was unpaid for the rest of it. When he came back, he had exactly the same seniority that he had before, and went from there.
That's what this sports. So does it, um, are there other requirements, like with, well, you have to work here a year before you're eligible?
Yeah, there are more requirements for when it kicks in, you have to have worked with the employer for a certain period of time.
It's a number of hours.
Thousand eighty or something like that, isn't it?
A thousand eighty, which is one year's worth.
Yeah, like thirty-two hours or something.
What's that?
Thirty-two hour weeks, or is it twenty-seven?
Well, it's a set amount of hours.
And you have to be.
Maximum number, a lot of places like to make it less. They're like, so the law actually says this is the maximum amount of time you can set for that criteria. And, you know, a lot of them make it less than that, but.
One thousand two hundred and fifty hours.
Right, twelve hundred and fifty hours.
And there are a lot of little details like that in these laws that I didn't go over today, because we're at an hour and a half.
Be irrelevant.
And we're out of time.
Relevant, right.
So, and the fact is, they're not gonna, and I guarantee, I will guarantee you this, I don't have advanced knowledge of what's on the test, but they're not gonna ask you how many hours you have to work at a place before FMLA kicks in.
Twelve hundred and fifty.
But if you need to know for your personal use, there you go, you got it in the book.
Yeah.
Um, any questions on anything I've gone over today? I know I went through it fast. I know it's complicated. You're all still awake, so I guess that's good. I thought this would be really dry for everybody, but the fact is, most of these laws do affect you, even if you never, even if you never go into management, they affect you personally as an employee. So it's good to know the details of a lot of them. You guys, you guys know that you cannot be fired if you get pregnant.
So we can't.
That's right.
Well,
I know the laws.
Again, you guys, you guys have my email address, if you have any questions, and um, I'm going to make it a goal, I'm gonna work over the weekend and get a lot of these, get as much of this posted as I can of, cause I'm kinda behind on posting the videos, and I apologize for that, so we'll get that taken care of.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions, Gina? See Gina did fall asleep. Up there she goes. No questions, okay, thank you Gina. Talk to you next time.
I did not fall asleep.
She's like, don't, don't kiss me if I'm asleep.
My boss is here.